Welcome to the March thirteenth, two thousand twenty-five Royal Oak Schools Board of Regular. CNN, we will proceed with the agenda as presented. Item three point two is the approval of the minutes. May I have a motion? The motion by trustee Ben Hitzma. Is there a second? Trustee Wiki, thank you. Is there any discussion on the motion? Yes. On the secret motion.
Be it resolved that the Royal Oak Schools Board of Education approves the following minutes: February sixth, twenty twenty-five, special minutes, financing facilities; February thirteenth, twenty twenty-five, regular minutes.
With that, is there any discussion? CNN, all in favor, six five, aye, saying aye?
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion is carried. Thank you. Item four point one on tonight's agenda is a proclamation for Women's History Month. May I have a proclamation? Trustee Alexander.
Whereas American women of every race, class, and ethnic background have made historic contributions to the growth and strength of our nation in countless recorded and unrecorded ways, whereas American women have played and continue to play.
Any discussion on this proclamation? CNN, I'll call for a vote. All in favor of adoption, please signify by saying aye.
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 Any opposed? Proclamation has been accepted. Item four point two is a proclamation in regard to Civic Learning Week, which is March fourteenth, tenth through the fourteenth. Thank you.
Whereas our nation's longstanding and ongoing audacious experiment in self-governance requires a populace with an understanding of the nation's laws and government, the skills for discussion and working together across differences, and a widespread commitment to the civic strength of our communities, and whereas civic education is vital to sustaining and strengthening constitutional democracy in the United States of America, and whereas the practice of democracy must be taught and learned anew by each generation, and whereas schools play a central role in building the civic strength of our populace and nation, and whereas Civic Learning Week seeks to unite our community and highlight the importance of civic knowledge, skills, and dispositions that provide the foundation for an informed and engaged populace, therefore, be it proclaimed that the Royal Oak Schools Board of Education designates the second week of March twenty twenty-five as Civic Learning Week in Royal Oak Schools.
Any do I have a second? Trustee Alexander. Any discussion on this proclamation? CNN, I'll call for a vote. All in favor of adoption, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Has been accepted. Four point three tonight is proclamation in support of the US Department of Education. May I have a motion? Trustee Ben Hitzma.
Whereas the Royal Oak Schools Board of Education recognition in civil rights initiatives, and whereas the Royal Oak Schools Board of Education values the importance of federal funding and the programs administered by the Department of Education to ensure equitable opportunities for all students, and now, therefore, be it resolved, the Royal Oak Schools Board of Education hereby expresses its strong support for the US Department of Education and its continued efforts to enhance education and provide essential funding and resources to support our students, teachers, and school district, and be it further resolved that the Royal Oak Schools Board of Education requests that the Department of Education continue to advocate for increased funding for educational programs and policies that support students' success and equity.
Thank you. Do I have a second? Trustee Wiki. Any discussion on this proclamation? I think CNN will call for a vote. All in favor of adoption?
Aye.
Any opposed? Proclamation has been adopted. If I may take liberty, I wanted to do a moment of silence at the beginning of the meeting, which I didn't do. Can we do that? I think it's fitting to do that during proclamations. Thank you. A moment of silence, I'm going to request for our friend and student Ryan Skates. Going to read a little portion of his obituary, which I think is very fitting to the life that he did lead. Ryan passed away on February eighteenth, two thousand twenty-five. Ryan had an offbeat sense of humor who enjoyed sharing laughter with his friends and family. He had the strength and courage to bravely live his truth as a trans person. Ryan was an outspoken advocate for LGBTQ plus and women's rights. Ryan enjoyed being a member of the ROHS cross-country and track team and was always supportive of his teammates. He was also a proud member of the Rats, working on technical crew for theater productions and concerts. Outside of school, Ryan was a member of the Sagecrafters Youth Theater, working in the lighting department. He also volunteered at the Royal Public Library in the Detroit Zoo Summer Camp. A note from his parents that was also published in his obituary. Be kind for everyone you meet. It is fighting a battle that you know nothing about. I'd ask the government to please join us for a moment of silence. Thank you. Now to item agenda, agenda item number five, which is public comment. If you would to make a public comment, a person may address the board on an agenda or non-agenda item by completing a note card located inside the boardroom and place a card in the basket prior to citizen public comment period. Each speaker is limited to three minutes. If you need more time, you are offered a second opportunity to address the board at the end of the meeting with an additional three minutes. Please address the board as a whole and not individually. Public comment is intended for the exchange of dialogue. This is a time for members of the public to express their views. We are paying attention to your comments and we appreciate them. However, school board members do not respond to public comment during the meeting. Questions that arise from public comments should be referred to the superintendent or her designee for review, study, and possible future response. Thank you in advance for your cooperation. Four cards have been turned in. I've shuffled them, so they're in random order. If I select to call up Erica Breimer?
Hi, guys. I just wanted to say thank you for proclaiming your support for the Department of Education. The Department of Education, it plays a vital role in creating equal access to education for all students here in Royal Oak and everywhere in our country. By declaring your support of the Department of Ed, you are also showing your support of all students in Royal Oak, not only of all students in Royal Oak, but all of your staff and teachers that are working tirelessly each day to educate the future leaders of our city, country, state, and world. Myself and the ROEA, thank you for proclaiming your support. Thanks, guys.
Great, thank you. Next, we have Mallory Greenway.
Hi, I'm Mallory Greenway. I am the ROEA Vice President, and I am also a parent in the district. I just wanted to say thank you for your support for supporting the US Department of Education. I am thankful for your support in such an important time in our country. I'm sure there are many core values we share among us, like compassion, honesty, teamwork, family, fairness. Tonight, the core value of commitment stands out. Commitment is the dedication and unwavering resolve to achieve goals often in the face of challenges. Together, we are committed to protect our students, our staff, and our community. I appreciate these shared values and your willingness to work together to keep public education strong. Thank you.
Thank you. Next, we have Kitty Boyer.
Hi. So I have two kids at Northwood, and we absolutely love it there. I just have to shout out our principal, Ms. Bass McCallor. She's incredible. Every teacher that my kids have had has been absolutely amazing. Ms. Bath, Ms. Christian, Ms. Miller, and Ms. Wilford. And school social worker is amazing. And I just wanted to say, basically, again, I think along lines of what we just heard, to thank you. And it makes me proud to be in this town and have my kids in this school district because I know that diversity, equity, and inclusion is important to this district and to this board. Dr. Yonos, I actually read your capstone because I'm in the same program, so I know where you come from. So, and it made me so happy that this is why we live here. You know, we could live anywhere else. My husband and I are not from this area at all. And we chose Royal Oak because, you know, there is a lot of diversity and acceptance here. You know, we have Drag Queen Bingo here. We have the Sidetrack Bookshop. And I, we very much wanted to raise our children around acceptance and diversity and equity and inclusion. And so to drive past the middle school and see, you know, the trans flag and pride flag every time, it makes me happy. Every time I see that, and I know that our queer kids in this district need to see it too. And our non-queer kids need to see that too. I know this is a hard time in this country, and it's scary. And so I wanted to make sure that the Royal Oak School Board know how much we appreciate this and how important it is to us. I have friends that live in other districts that are going to their school board meetings and having to talk to people who have outwardly said transphobic things about children, about trans kids. I mean, these are children who deserve respect, who deserve our protection. And I feel that this is happening here at Northwood. You know, my kids come home talking about what they learned during Black History Month, and they're not just learning about the same, you know, things that maybe I sort of learned about when I was a child. They're learning about all kinds of people who have contributed to our society. You know, they, I walk past Northwood during Pride Month, and there's pride flags and chalk and, you know, and it's just, it's so wonderful, and I am so grateful. And I really hope that this continues and that we keep Royal Oak and Royal Oak Schools a place that values everybody. You know, like we said, we pledge allegiance to the liberty and justice for all. And we freaking mean it, right? This is important. This is huge. So I just wanted to say that, and that, you know, there are so many of us that feel this way and really want to stand up and protect our queer kids, our trans kids, and our migrant kids, the people that are being scapegoated right now. They need our protection. They need our advocacy, and they need our help. So, thank you.
Great, thank you. I have Carrie DeMiner.
Well, now it's gonna be hard not to cry because that was amazing. I'm Carrie DeMiner. I am the president of the ROEA, and now I'm totally choked up because that's the reason why we do this. That's why all these people are wearing red. It's because we can work together to do the right thing. I grew up here, went to school here, my kids went to school here, and I'm here to serve, to make sure that we can push everything forward and work together. To me, collaboration is so important, and to not get any kind of pushback on anything like this is amazing and that you're fearless. And that's what we need right now. And I'm on board. I'm on board so we can protect our kids and make sure that this environment makes parents like that, that want to raise their kids in an environment like this. That's what's important. So I had this really cute speech and everything, but it's really hard. And, you know, this is just the beginning of this. It really started last month when Mrs. Fitzpatrick talked about IDEA and funding that. That's, those are the types of things that we have to make our government accountable for because it's for the betterment of our kids. Supporting teachers is for the betterment of our kids, supporting parents, making sure that they have the resources. You're gonna see it again tonight when RAMS does their presentations. We're making an environment of tolerance, and that's what's most important. That's more important than math, science, social studies. All of that is trumped by making sure that Royal Oak puts out the best citizens it can. So I'm happy to be a part of that with you. So thank you very, very much.
Thank you. Bring us to item six point one, which is the Education Excellence Award from SETSEG Foundation. I'm going to ask Mrs. Fitzpatrick.
Sure, thank you. Well, I'd like to invite up Principal Maljum to come up, as well as our friends from SETSEG. We have many partners in this state and in our immediate area here in Detroit that support us and support our programs, and we are very proud of the work that we do. And now we've been recognized by these outstanding agents from our community. And so I'll ask Ms. Maljum if she would please describe a little bit about the program and then introduce and hear from our speakers from SETSEG. Thank you.
Absolutely. So thank you so much for having us. I do have to say that while I may have applied for the grant, I did not put together You Matter Week. And we are, we are so lucky to have four amazing counselors because, again, as everybody has talked about RAMS and the school board and our community fully supports student mental health. So I want to turn it over to two of my amazing colleagues that are here, Sam Ellis, who is one of our counselors, and Carrie Lawrence. And they are two of the masterminds behind You Matter Week, who can give us kind of a overall understanding of what You Matter Week is, even though I didn't tell them that they would be speaking. Do you want me to? Okay. Thank you.
Well, thank you. You Matter Week, the counseling staff, I, I want to say we are so honored to receive this award. And it's not just for the team up here. It's for all of our amazing teachers, support staff, administration that was able to bring this program to our school. So You Matter Week is really dedicated to help students reduce the stigma of mental health, and we do a lot of different activities. We're really passionate and dedicated as working as a team to figure out different activities that our students will enjoy doing, that will learn about themselves, make them stronger, make them powerful, make them advocates for themselves. And the ultimate goal is to learn about our school, our community, our self, respect one another, be kind to one another, and really make Royal Oak Middle School a positive, respectful, responsible, and safe place. So we're very passionate about doing You Matter Week, and we expanded it to Wellness Wednesday. So every Wednesday, the students have an activity that they can participate in.
So one of our favorite parts of the You Matter Week this year that we added was we brought in all of the therapy dogs, and even one of the cabinet members was able to bring in Cooper, one of our favorite therapy dogs. And so we've been able to expand it a little bit each time. And so the therapy dogs is one of our favorite additions. In addition to our positive chalk talk, just, we have such a central location for our building that there are community members that are able to walk by and see all the positive chalk talk outside and things that were able to spread beyond our own school. And so it's just something that we're so excited about, and with this money, we're able to do more. So we're just so grateful. So thank you.
Good evening. My name is Bridget Briggs. I have Kathy Hungerford here with me. We're representing the Michigan Association of School Boards and the SETSEG Foundation to present the Education Excellence Award to the You Matter Week. And this is one of ten programs. We receive applicants from all over the state, so this is really extraordinary. And our hope is that this grant will allow you to reach more kids and further your program. I had some notes. You did such a wonderful job. So we are just going to hand you over your check now.
That's making me turn around.
Trophy? I don't want to drop it. It's your fault. Thank you so much.
Thank you.
You're welcome. I think it is fake, but I don't know. I don't know who wants the actual check. I know who handles the money.
No, 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 don't give it to her. Oh, I'm gonna get it back.
And how about the trophy? Where would you like the trophy?
I'll take the trophy. Thank you so much. Thank you.
Thank you. Great job.
Thank you for driving that.
Is there any board discussion on this agenda item? Trustee Ben Hitzma.
That was actually funny. Can I just watch that again? No, just, just a huge shout out. I know the You Matter Weeks mean a lot to the kids, and it means a lot to the staff. And so I'm grateful that we're able to do those at the middle school, at the high school.
And at the high school.
Yeah.
I wanted to say that as well.
We, we had a meeting yesterday with some high school students, and they talked a bit about the You Matter Week and just the importance of it and how it just helps support them. And even when you're having that bad day, that helps you over the bad day. So thank you so much for, for keeping that program going. It's so important.
I'm grateful that, you know, Carrie Lawrence was at the high school and is now at the middle school and was able to bring that program. But it was so important, it kept going at the high school, and that's why it's at both. And so we're just very grateful that now we want it instead of a week, now we have it on Wednesdays. We want it every single day. We just want that conversation to keep going, that it's okay, and we're just here to talk about it. So that's, that's our overall goal. So.
Anybody else? Bring us to item six point two, which are diversity, equity, and inclusion. Miss Phillips.
Good evening. I'll wait till, until we have our screen for a second. But again, as promised, no snow, and I have a special guest. So there's lots on my agenda when you see the list, but it's just a few wrap-up items, save the date, and to our favorite part, our RDJ guest.
I hear a little sound. We're there. All right, here we go. So we'll just do a little wrap-up from February, talk a little bit about our PD for term inform training, a few save the dates, and our special guest.
So you all may remember that last year around this time, we were featured with the MDE for the Black History Month Calendar Project, and a lot of our teachers from Royal Oak Schools had their lessons shared statewide. This year, the MDE switched it up a little bit. They used suggestions from their Student Advisory Council and gave online resources on the same website for students and parents and the community. So I did some internal highlights and just reached out to our schools and asked for a few lessons that were featured for Black History Month. So first up was Mrs. Kimberly Kaminsky from Upton Elementary. She said that her class every day read the book Twenty Eight Days, and they talked about different African-Americans who were change makers. So it was Twenty Eight Days, Moments in Black History That Changed the World. And she said they had a blast learning about different people and the changes they made, and were very inspired. And next up was Maria Manolios, who's from Royal High School, and she was also featured with the MDE project last school year. She said that her ninth and eleventh grade ELA students spotlighted a black, different black historian each day, and that her juniors worked through counter narratives unit where they interrupted dominant narratives that perpetuate harmful stereotypes. So we were excited to see some of the things that they did. Now, in the spirit of collaboration, I'm also a part of our Oakland County Jedi Council, and our last month's meeting was actually hosted by West Bromfield Schools. So we were so excited. So we were so excited to collaborate and go over to Chico Elementary, one of their elementary schools there. And perfect timing, they had their fourth grade and fifth grade Black History Wax Museum. So all the students were in different rooms throughout the school, and they dressed up as different black historians and change makers. And when we pressed their button, we were able to hear their speeches, hear about their lives, hear about different challenges in their childhood. And they actually took on the roles all the way of the different people who they featured. And I saw a few students who I knew as well. So we have a few pictures there. And my favorite moment was meeting my most favorite music artist, Stevie Wonder here. So we got to hear a little bit of music as well. So thank you again to West Bromfield Schools for hosting us and allowing that collaborative moment with our Jedi Council. Next up, back to Royal Oak. We wrapped up the month with our African-American Read-It, and we were able to be featured with 16 different districts. And Oakland Schools said that it was their breaking record, or record-breaking number of watch sites. So we had tons of people here. Our collaborative picture at the end doesn't even feature everyone that was here towards the end. So we had a blast. And thankful to ECU and the Clausen Orthodontics, we were able to get food sponsored by Chef Mike Jacobs and Chef Michelle, and have a lovely spread during the meeting, but then also some food to take home as well. So thank you again to them and Chartwell's. Moving on to our Trauma Informed Training, I am fortunate to join Cohort Number Seven, which is taking place this month. And again, it's internal work. A lot of times, we may have professional development that's for teachers that focus on the students and what to do in the class and different things. But this is really focusing on the teachers and staff wellness, healing a lot of trauma, looking into different trauma responses, just a lot of introspection work, and definitely looking into what we're bringing into our classrooms and into our learning spaces and what we can heal within ourselves to be better educators. After this cohort is done on March 21st, we will have 245 trained staff members. So we're really excited because that's coming to a wrap. We'll head over to Cohort Number Eight. And just yesterday, Royal Oak High School featured their Women Empowered Career Fair. They had 27 presenters featuring elected officials, authors, engineers, educators, healthcare representatives, and more. And I know our students are following us after this. I'll let them give a little bit more of the information from yesterday's career fair, but there was lots of planning that went into it, and we're so glad that they were able to hold this event again. And the Royal Oak Public Library would like me to remind you all of our collaboration with them as well. For our art show opening day party is going to take place on March 22nd. You can find more information on our website and on their website as well for the public library. But the actual party is going to start at 2:00 and go into 5:30. There'll be live music, refreshments, and you can also sign up for a library card if you don't have it at the time. Speaking of the library, they helped us tremendously with this reading tour. So they helped us to shop books at the library and to get different bookmarks donated. And we are up to 11-plus visits so far, and we're not even halfway through March. So it's really exciting, returning all the schools and definitely reading to the students. So Happy National Reading Month. And moving on to another Save the Date coming up, for our International Food and Fun Festival is open to all. They'll be hosted by Keller Elementary. The date is May 2, 2025, and it will be from 6:30 to 8:30. Again, food, fun, music, all the things that were coming together. Now, on Keller's website, if you go to the PTA tab, you'll be able to see pictures from the past events for this event and also the recipes from different countries around the world. So please join us for that. And our last Save the Date will be for June 19. So I am partnering with the Hamer Family Descendants and the Royal Oak Public Library and Royal Oak City as well to help to plan the June Team Celebration. Again, it's going to be June 19 of this year. We've shortened the day a little bit. It used to be three to eight. We will be three to seven with our walk starting right at four. Food, fun, celebration, learning, all of the things coming together. So we're really excited for this event, and we'll give more details as it comes as well. You can also find out a little bit more of the past events from the Royal Oak City's website. And last but not least, I want to welcome up, as I've been talking about probably since October or November, two of our leaders from the Interfaith Leadership Council and our students as well from ROMS that have been on this religious diversity journey with us. I'll first welcome up our adults just to tell us a little bit about the program. And students, get ready. You can start lining up kind of right here.
All right. Well, thank you guys for having us here tonight. We're really excited to be here. My name is Beth Filinski, and I work with the Interfaith Leadership Council of Metropolitan Detroit. And we're here tonight to support our wonderful Religious Diversity Journey students. I just want to tell you really briefly a little bit about the program. One of the things that is actually really exciting is at the conclusion of this school year, we're going to be rebranding the program. The new name is going to be Journeys: World Religion in Metropolitan Detroit. And we're doing that just basically because we feel it aligns better with our mission of taking the middle school world religions, social studies curriculum, and bringing it to life for the students. So it really just highlights that aspect of the program. Our goal basically for our students, for any of the students that partner with us, is to create immersive learning experiences for the students where they get a chance to go to the different houses of worship and then again, on the cultural experience and participate in, you know, learning some basic faith information, as well as participating in some exciting activities that really, again, bring the faith to life for the students. And we really just, we intend to highlight the cultural practices and the religious beliefs that influence the different diverse communities in our metro Detroit area. So we really want to bring all of that to life for our students, you know, with the goal of reducing stereotypes and reducing fear among the students. We always tell them to bring their curiosity on any journey, and they certainly do on every journey. They have lots of questions. And we work with probably over 50 faith communities, and they are always so welcoming and so excited to welcome our students. So I'm going to let Jen tell you a little bit about the students and the school districts that we work with.
Hi, I'm Jen James. I also work with Interfaith Leadership Council. So we've had this year was one of our bigger cohorts that we've had. We had six cohorts, and that's about 25 schools all around metro Detroit, public, private. We have a Montessori school. So, you know, we're looking to expand in any educational setting to bring all these students to this wonderful program. And as Beth said, that we go to different houses of worship. So the kids for these, they get five religious journeys and then one cultural journey. So during this time, they'll go to a Jewish temple, or Jewish synagogue, excuse me, Hindu temple, Christian church, a Sikh gudwara, and Muslim mosque. So they get to experience that. And then their cultural journey, they will go to, we've partnered with Zuckman Holocaust, which they did last week. They got to experience that cultural journey. The DIA, the Arab American National Museum, as well as Charles E. Triton Henry Board. So we really like to bring a lot of opportunities. And when the schools register, they get to choose their top three. And so we try to align that with what they would prefer their children to go to and the students. So we love having ROMS. This was the first time that we've got to work with them this year. And they're, like Beth said, they're very curious, they're very kind, and I really enjoyed that. I like to get, I like to immerse with the students. So I'm looking forward to seeing them do their show about their hard work as well. Thank you.
Hi, I am Owen Herbis, and I'm in seventh grade. And I want to talk about my RDJ journey. My RDJ journey was, I personally really enjoyed it, and I loved going to all of the different places and learning about all of the different religions. One of my favorite places that I went to was the Jewish synagogue because it was right before my friend Ari's bar mitzvah. So it was really cool learning about the Jewish religion and how that's so different right before my friend's bar mitzvah. So I found it very cool and interesting. And he also got into a fake wedding, which was very funny. But another place that I do want to talk about is St. John's Armedian Church. It was great to have like the piece of paper that had all the umbrella terms, like all of the different forms of Christianity. And I thought that was really cool, just seeing how many there really was. But I think my favorite part about that was I decided to speak about how my journey went. And I feel like I just really liked speaking and talking about how my journey like went and how the church was. My last place that I really loved was definitely the Zuckman Holocaust Center. I feel like I learned so much about the Holocaust, and I loved going on the tour and hearing about the Second Gen speaker. And it was really amazing, and I definitely want to visit it again. Thank you.
Hello, my name is Vinnie Chingowski. I'm in seventh grade. And some of my wonderful experiences with this Religious Diversity Program is getting to have the unique foods that we get on the journeys, getting to see the history behind the religions, also understanding how they're all kind of connected and have the same bases, and knowing how I can use what I've gained on these journeys to use in my future life and career paths. All of the journeys were amazing, and I would do it again in a heartbeat if I could.
My name is Ari Solomon. I am in seventh grade, and I would like to share my experience with Religious Diversity Journeys. The Diversity Journeys have been some of the most fun I've had in a bit. And some of my favorite, I think my favorite trip by far was the Holocaust Museum because it's a part of my family's history. And right, and I remember right after that trip, my dad sent me an interview of a person from my family who survived the Holocaust. And supposedly, people have not heard his voice in decades, I'm pretty sure. But today, I'd like to, I guess, explain why I brung Religious Diversity Journeys to Royal Oak. So I was, I wouldn't, I wouldn't really know if you'd call it a victim or whatnot of hate speech, because one of my classmates told me, the guy, the guy from 1945 was a good person, which, now that isn't really good to tell a Jew. But, so I took it to the principal, and she offered to suggest us, and you guys clearly said yes, because we're speaking right now. And I think that might have been the best decision I could have made.
Hello, I'm Natalie Carpus. I'm in seventh grade, and I'm here to talk to you a little bit about my experience at RDJ. At RDJ, I met lots of friends and cool people. I actually met, one of my best friends is Roth during RDJ. My favorite thing, my favorite place to go to was the mosque because my friend Isroth is Muslim. So I got to learn more about her religion and her culture. I also connected with peers at school and learned about religion, history, and art. We, I had lots of cool experiences and visited lots of places. RDJ is an amazing program, and to learn about different religions firsthand, things that can help me connect to the world around me as well as my fellow peers. That's all.
Good afternoon. My name is Brendan Hardy. I'm in eighth grade, and I would absolutely love to talk about RDJ and to learn about the different faiths and religions that are all the way around us, and to kind of disperse and destroy the different stereotypes of different religions, whether you're a Hindu, a Muslim, a Christian. It doesn't matter. It was absolutely wonderful learning about the different religions, learning about what different people believe in and put their faith in. And as my grandmother told me, it's always good to have a little bit of faith, no matter what it's in. And I absolutely loved learning about different religions, whether it was a religion that I practiced or that my friends practiced, like my friend Ari, that you had just heard from. I absolutely loved it, and I wish I could do it again, again, and again.
I'm not going to tap any of those. So I won't, though. So the story goes that Mrs. Lawrence and I met with them on Monday, and we said, and we prepared none of those, just so you know. We said, all right, get something ready. Do you want to practice? Said, no. None of this. We don't want to practice with you. And then I even saw a couple that I said, all right, we told you to write this down and get ready. He said, no, we're not writing it down. So before they started, I was like, oh, I don't know how this is going to go. I don't know. And they were just, you guys are great. So good job. I'm not going to add much to what they said, but a couple of things is, it was a wonderful experience. And it's always said how we got the whole thing started last year with, you know, the whole thing. But I will say, one thing they didn't say as much, I think the other one said something. One thing, the connection with the other schools that we went with, with one of the schools and all that. And the thing I found interesting is, as we got going with the other schools, when a couple of kids were absent, the other schools would come and say, where are they at? Who's missing today? They would come and say, they'd kind of look for the other kids when they were missing and all that. And that was kind of a cool connection. And my own personal part is, I sort of got connected, and Ms. Lawrence and Mrs. Elmer were probably the same way. I sort of got connected with these kids in our school. So I'd see the seventh grader, you know, I do the eighth grade this year. I kind of would see the other ones around in the school. I would see them, or I'd see my other eighth graders. You had that more of a personal connection with them in the school, just what you kind of went through this whole program. So I think that's part that really stuck out to me. So, there you go.
Thank you all. Are there any questions, even though I think they answered them all? Yes.
I always have to say something, you know that. So I just wanted to thank the kids and their families and the people who, you know, support the program. I didn't know this was a tissue day today. Mrs. Sutterfield, there needs to be tissue at the table all the time. But just thank you guys for coming and just for speaking from the heart. That's just, it's just amazing. So I'm glad we can provide these experiences for our students and that there's people that are running these programs for so many kids because it's important to know everybody, right? And where everybody comes from, and to know people's motivations to do what they do. So thank you so much for being brave and just coming right up here and talking to us. I appreciate it.
Thanks.
Well, thank you. Well, first, I'd like to thank our students again. Wow, you represent us very well. Great job up here tonight. But also, you know, I was moved by the comments where you said that you loved it, would go back over and over, and you learned so much. But I think knowing how it changes your perspective moving forward, you know, you think about leaving ROMS and going off to the high school where there'll be another set of kids to meet again and come in contact with, and then again, in the broader world after Royal Oak Schools. And I think this experience has changed you. That's what I thought about as you were describing your experience on the journey. I do hope you'll talk to other students about this experience so that when this comes around again, we'll have another set of kids equally as interested as all of you have been. And just thank you to the teachers and the leaders of the program for helping Royal Oak Schools get involved in this as well. So thank you.
Any other comments from the board? No, I just want to thank you, Ari, for being brave, bringing your story to the principal and getting this whole thing started. What a wonderful thing you've done. And thank you, Miss Phillips. Bring us to item 6.3 tonight, and Trustee Van Heysma, sorry.
I didn't know Mrs. Phillips was leaving. So I just wanted to just do another shout out. It was referenced in here, so for leading the reading for March's Reading Month. So that's just been a lot of fun. I've enjoyed it a lot because it's, it just, I love reading to the kids, so it's very nice. to the kids, so it's very nice. And for bringing us the author, um, she was amazing to listen to and just, um, just sitting there listening to her and her experiences and, and what caused her to write the books she wrote. And, uh, when I got home, I, I texted my daughter who's a teacher and I said, I have these books, I have this idea for you. And she already had books from the author and so I actually sent her the one, um, that we had at the, the presentation as well, so. Um, but thank you for bringing that in, organizing all that, it's just really nice and, and having the opportunity to read to students to, and stressing the importance of reading is, is really appreciated, so thank you.
Trustee Anderson.
First, I just want to say, every month is tissue month, Mrs. Van Heitzma. I wanted to thank Ms. Phillips for bringing us such positive news month after month. Um, it's very uplifting and I think we all really appreciate, um, everything that you bring to our district. Thank you.
Alright, now we're moving on to agenda item six point three, which is our student representatives to the board. It looks like Mr. Francis has started.
I just wanted to talk about, or let everyone know that, um, especially seniors who may be in attendance or listening from home and the parents of seniors, that our senior class officers are running a fundraiser through SNAP raise to raise money for prom as well as end of the year senior events for the high school. So please, seniors, do your part and, um, send the email that you're going to get out to as many people as you can so we can lower the cost of prom as well as all senior events. Thank you. And then I also wanted to talk about, um, the Royal Oak Model United Nations trip to Nismon in New York last week. Um, we went to the United Nations, which was super cool, and we got to talk to the ambassador of Czechia and interview him, which was really cool because we were all, well, Royal Oak, Roman was, um, representing the delegation of Czechia in the conference. So, um, it was a ton of fun and I also wanted to say, me and Liam Watkins, who is the student representative on the Finance and Facilities Board, uh, we were selected by the chairman to speak in front of half of the conference, which was just under 3,000 people, which was super horrifying, but also really exciting. And it was a ton of fun and just a great experience and it couldn't have been done without our advisors, Ms. Laurent and Ms. Buzoni, so thank you to them.
Alright, now it is my turn, talking back to these, uh, women career thing, that was honestly amazing. I was not able to attend at that time, but I was able to be in the Learning Commons during it. Um, I attended last year and it was amazing, they have like hands-on, like small experiences. It's obviously like you can't perform some jobs right then and there, but they have some hands-on experiences, some videos, some interactive things, and they just show a, like, vast variety of every single career you could do. There was from like engineering all the way to just like working in the FBI and it was honestly amazing to see all these women just in like so many things and, and they were all diverse and it was just amazing to see the amount of people that do the same amount of job, but like, not like the same amount, you know what I mean? The amount of people that do different jobs, but they all come together because they have so many things in common and they're able to be one space and it's just, like, it, it explores the ideas of where you can work, because not a lot of people think about many places, like, I didn't think about working in trade until I went there and I was like, I could do that. I just didn't think about it and it's just so nice to be able to, like, show everybody the amount of careers you can go into with such an event that fits in the Learning Commons. And our Learning Commons is not that big compared to like other schools, like, I, I don't even understand, I love it, there's not that many books, we should work on that. She's working, Ms. Chairman's working hard on that, I love her, she's amazing. But also, spring sports are starting up soon, um, and our winter sports are wrapping up. And testing is soon for M-Step, SAT, PSAT, I think NWEA, I don't know, I don't like NWEA, so I don't want to think about it anymore. Um, the quarter for our school is ending soon, that ends April 11th. And then for seniors, they leave shortly after that. And then there is, they're implementing a new virtual testing days, so days that testing, uh, students are testing, some other students will not be in the school based on grades. 12th grade mostly stays home, lucky. Um, 11th grade is in most days, same with, um, every other grade, virtual, virtual days are in emails, all those emails have been sent out. Um, there's a list of things students should bring and should not bring. And honestly, that's about it. And then since testing's coming up soon, let me plug in the National Honors Society, especially because some of my friends need their tutoring hours. Those are before school, Monday, Tuesday, Thursday, Friday, between seven and then 7:50, and then you can register on the link and then after school from 3:05 to 4:00 p.m. the same days besides Thursday for after school, well, Friday after school. And I'm just plugging that in because tutoring is mad essential for some people. I am one, but I will not go, I have Khan Academy. I like the points that I get and the confetti when I get the questions right. So I take my confetti system very important to me. But yeah, the National Honors Society, I think they should bring confetti things, that, sorry, I'm getting off topic here. But yeah, so I'm plugging that in as testing's coming around soon, NWEA, all of that. Um, there's a lot more on the weekly, like, Raven Report that they get on weekends that are sent to parents' emails. And so, that's about all I have to say, is that, and so, yeah, that was fun.
Um, little bit of a rebuttal here, but, uh, compared to my old school, I just have to say, the Learning Commons at Royal Oak is actually ginormous, at least compared to my old school. Like, two, two floors, come on.
Ours was a whole level at my old school in Texas and Washington, so I feel as if that's a rebuttal to your rebuttal. Okay, ours was a whole floor. Fight you on that one. That's all I have to say.
Anybody from this side of the table have questions for our students? No, excellent, thank you both so much. Item number seven on tonight's agenda, which is Communications, and I'll ask secretary Anderson to address that.
Uh, we've had a few since our last meeting, Claudine Godecki, Becky Hill, Donae Bernard, Emily Boomer, and Kimberly Oprens.
Sure, thank you. Item number eight tonight is the Consent Agenda. The Consent Agenda generally consists of routine editors as well as items that have been covered during this meeting or another board or committee meeting. All items are documented in the minutes, which are published following the meeting at which they were approved. All of our committee and board meetings are open to the public and public comment is an item on each agenda. We invite members of the public to join our committees. If you have any additions or deletions from tonight's Consent Agenda? CNN, the Consent Agenda is passed as presented. Bring us to item number nine, which is the Superintendent's Report.
Thank you. Well, first, I just want to, um, thank all of our educators that are in the room here or watching at home or will watch this after the fact that, just the amount of pride that I have to be a public educator, um, I've worked in this profession for 39 years and I couldn't be more proud of the work that we do. And I know now as a superintendent much more than I did, uh, in, or earlier in my career, just how important it is that we have the collaboration from our federal government through the Department of Education as well as our state government. We get a lot of support for the programs that we do here at, at the local level, um, and I'm just really proud that we had that resolution on our agenda this evening. Uh, my business item for you is item nine point one point one, which is the second reading of revised or replaced or recommended policies and guidelines. And just as a reminder, we do have a policy subcommittee where the board members and I meet and regularly go over policies to look at what we might need to do to comply with law or changes to the law, and then also to look at policies that help better fit our work here and guide our work in Royal Oak Schools. And so tonight, there's a recommendation for your consideration.
Before you think, do I have a motion for nine point one point one? Trustee Anderson?
Resolved that the Royal, Royal Oak Schools Board of Education approves a second reading of the policies and administrative guidelines being revised, replaced, and are recommended as presented.
Thank you, Mr. Second. Trustee Alexander. Any discussion on the motion? CNN, I'll call for a vote, all in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion is passed.
Also this evening, I wanted to share a, an announcement. After serving the Royal Oak Schools community since 2017, I want to share the news of my retirement as your superintendent. Effective July 31st, 2025, the Board of Education received a letter from me earlier today and I really want to take my time now to thank all of you for supporting me in my eight years in Royal Oak. And as I said, marking my 39th year in public education. Leading in this district has been an incredible opportunity. Tonight, looking at the proclamations that were passed, Women History Month, I am the first female superintendent in the history of the district and I have been very proud to represent you with that. And after four decades in public education, I also want to recognize it's the very same public education system in the state of Michigan that educated my children. Royal Oak will always have a special place in my heart. But for now, it is time to enjoy more quality time with my family. My husband Michael, who's here tonight, my son Brendan, who should be watching from Ohio, my daughter Lauren and her husband Will, and we, they have all been along this journey with me, it's been an incredible ride. They have supported me and they have worked along my, alongside of me as I serve two wonderful communities of Berkeley and Royal Oak. As I reflect upon the successes and the challenges that we've all faced together, I feel incredibly proud of everything we've accomplished. Keeping our students' best interest has always been at the heart and it was imperative and it will be moving forward in this district. Thank you for allowing me to serve you and most importantly, our students, and for those families, your children. There's still many days of school left this year and there are many important decisions to make and other celebrations to enjoy, so for now, let's continue working together and ensure that they are a success. Thank you.
Does I conclude the Superintendent's Report? Alright, with the letter received this afternoon, I would like a motion to suspend the rules and to amend our agenda to accept the resignation of Superintendent Fitzpatrick. It's like a motion from trustee Van Heitzma?
Um, I move to amend the agenda to add necessary action under New Business Section regarding the retirement statement of the superintendent and insert item 10.1 Superintendent Retirement.
Do we have a second? Trustee Cook. Any discussion on this motion? Trustee Wiki.
Um, as the newest board member, I have to say, I feel a little bit cheated because I will not get the opportunity to work with you for the length of time that the other members of the board have been able to do that. Uh, but at the same time, congratulations, you, you've earned it and I'm sure you will enjoy your time not going to work every day, so. Congratulations to you.
Trustee Van Heitzma.
I was going to say, so when I started on the board eight years ago, my first job on the board was to hire a superintendent, so. Um, and so I was able to participate, Mrs. Anderson and I were on the team at that time, um, to, to do the selection process for Mrs. Fitzpatrick, so, um, I just want to thank her for all her years, um, putting up with me for two years as president, but just, um, the importance and, you know, ensuring that our mission, vision, and values remains the same, that we're committed to our staff, our students, our community, so, thank you.
Trustee Cook.
I just wanted to convey how deeply I respect the work that you do. It is clear that you're committed and dedicated to the students, to the staff, to helping all of us, um, uh, you know, fulfill the role that we've taken on as board members and building the community that we have in these schools. So I wish you well in your retirement and I know that you won't be a stranger to our district.
Trustee Anderson.
Well, first, I was thinking of voting no on this, but I don't think it would do any good.
We've not submitted anything yet, so.
But, I mean, I, I just want to say thank you for everything you've meant to this community and to this district, um, and I know you won't be a stranger and we're going to have you around for a few more months, so, um, just thank you from the bottom of my heart.
Trustee Alexander.
Um, I have truly appreciated the last four years and the opportunity to work together and, um, and I, I have such huge respect for you and I am really excited for you in the next chapter.
I'm like, fine, we've come a long way. Now, I want to thank you for everything you've taught me and this entire board. In fact, I tell people now, I'm like, oh, my best friend Mary Beth, BFF Mary Beth. But I'll thank you for everything you've done and I know that we can trust you and depend upon your leadership until your last minute here. Move on to item nine point two. Well, we didn't vote to do that, you're right, Michelle. Can, can we vote on the amended agenda? Unless we're really trying to keep it forever, which I think we are, so we're not voting. But all in favor of the motion to amend the agenda and add item 10.1?
Aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion's carried, thank you. Item nine point two is curriculum and instruction.
Thank you, Mr. Chorhorsky, I appreciate that. I will try my best to follow that, um, so please forgive me if I stumble over a few things, but I do want to take a moment to also thank Mrs. Fitzpatrick, provided me with a light of guidance, um, over the years, over the eight years that I've known you, provided me with opportunities within our district and, um, your voice and leadership will be in my head for a while, a long while, and, um, hopefully you can look back and be proud of what we'll accomplish moving forward. That being said, uh, we do have this monthly insight into curriculum video to take a look at for this month and we have, um, our focus this month will be justice, our Justice 101 program, we've talked a little bit about it before, um, and we're so fortunate to have Judge Meinikee here in our backyard for our fifth grade students and they have a wonderful opportunity each year to engage in some learning with Judge Meinikee and of course, a wonderful field trip opportunity to learn more about our court system and how everything works. And if anyone has an opportunity ever to witness Judge Meinikee in the classroom, it is a phenomenal thing, I've seen it myself firsthand at Adams when he would come to our fifth grade classes and his, um, high level of energy and engagement was very impressive. I know he does great things in the courtroom, but he is phenomenal in that classroom as well, so we're going to go ahead and take a look at this month's video.
Justice 101 is a comprehensive court school education program. It's truly one of a kind, there isn't a program, uh, similar to it anywhere across the state of Michigan and it really is a product of a, everybody coming together with one common goal and that is to familiarize our students with the court system and also help prepare them for some of the different life choices that they'll be facing as they advance to middle school and then to high school. I'm going to show up in the fifth grade classroom, uh, I spend my Monday lunchtime, uh, for about 75 to 90 minutes and we're going to cover, we have four different chapters, so to speak, that we deal with. The first, uh, chapter, we, uh, deal with the four different levels of the Michigan court system, so we go through the district court, the cert and probate courts, we go through the Michigan Court of Appeals and the Michigan Supreme Court. And so, um, once we get done with that first chapter, we talk about the, the court system. The second chapter, we talk about the types of cases that, that, um, that they're going to see, that's where I really delve into, alright, you're going to see my probation docket, you're going to see individuals who have committed poor choices and, uh, what we're doing as a court system to correct that behavior, rehabilitate that person, get them back in the community in a safe manner. So after we get done talking about the different levels of court and we talk about, um, what they're going to see, then I talk about how somebody becomes a judge, how someone goes from being a fifth grade student to becoming a judge. And so we go through that whole process about how judges are elected, so you have to be able to get your name on a ballot. And in order to get your name on a ballot to be a judge, you have to be a lawyer and you have to have been a lawyer for five years. And then the fourth session, uh, is always about their, their questions, because as you can imagine, they have tons of questions and, uh, it's a, it's absolutely fascinating the types of questions that I get. I always tell them at the beginning, I say, listen, we're, you know, if we, if I, if, if we took all the questions all the way throughout, um, I'll never get through everything, so write it down, we'll save it to the end, but I'll always give you plenty of time to ask those questions. And I get questions from, do you have pockets in your robe, what's the funniest case you've ever seen, what's the saddest case you've ever seen, but some really thoughtful questions as well, some of them. But some really thoughtful questions as well, some of them from their own personal experiences, whether they've had different early challenges. The kids really show their maturity and their readiness for this program, and oftentimes it's revealed through that question period. And so it's a lot that they learn just in that 75 to 90 minutes that I have with them. But then, the most impactful part of it is when they take what they've heard from me and they see it in action in this courtroom. So while they're in the courtroom, they also have homework, and as you can imagine, they're always super excited when I say that. But their assignment, and it's to further get by the D H D pair for the visit ahead, is that they have to memorize a vocab word. And the vocab word all has to do with something related to the court. It could be judge or jury, or guilty or not guilty, or misdemeanor offense, probation officer, those types of things. And it's always so impressive when students stand up in court and they'll say their word and from memory, recite it out there. And I'm always so pleased, and also the response of the gallery. You can see even the people waiting for a court hearing, their court hearing are always very impressed at the job that our students do with this program. And then after they're done with me, because once we break for court, I talk to them for about eight to 10 minutes in chambers, just try to give a little recap of what they've seen and prepare them for the next stage of their visit, because then they move on to the Royal Oak Police Department, and they get a full first-class tour of our brand-new police department, which is always a really exciting thing for our fifth grade students.
It was most likely exciting stuff to see what it would look like in a courtroom and what would be happening in a courtroom, and especially for the police station, it's like how you could see what it looks like in the police stations and stuff like that. And I learned a lot, and it was like fun, and seeing all the places, the police station and Judge Meinike talking about cases and stuff, and pretty cool. I think today was more than anything, learning experience, because we got to learn about laws and everything that happened, and we had to memorize them at home, which actually helped learning in a bunch of people. And at the police station, they also taught us about how they expect us to act and everything, and that we shouldn't, that we shouldn't be really good people, and that we should respect all of the laws, and we don't agree with them.
It's a special program, and it's good for everybody. When we're done, everybody feels a lot better about our community, about our school district, and our students are that much more engaged in sort of at least two branches of government when they get done. So my hope is they get a chance to see how government should be working, and either want to be a part of it, always be a, you know, a set of eyes to make sure that we are doing things the right way, maybe someday as a job opportunity, but it's really just about getting them engaged and see this court as something that belongs to them rather than something to be feared or nervous about.
So as you can see, there's a lot of magic within that program, but I'll tell you, one of the most phenomenal things is how Judge Meinike really creates that relationship with the students. He has multiple sessions with all the fifth graders at each of our buildings, gets to know their names, and just engages them. You can see one point, he's right in the middle of the classroom on the stool, teaching those kids and working with them. So wonderful program, and so happy that our students here in Royal Oak can experience that. I do have a couple brief updates. We have a lot of research out there, talks about teacher induction programs and mentor and mentee programs, and we are proud of the program that we have here in Royal Oak Schools. And we have a recent grant opportunity, 27H is the name of the grant, and it allows school districts to analyze their current teacher induction and mentoring program, and then apply for grant money to help increase the supports put in place. As we know, when we have teachers that are supported and made to feel prepared and ready, we end up keeping them longer. So we're excited about and in the process of completing that grant application, and hopefully will be awarded some funds to find ways to improve and increase our teacher induction and mentor and mentee program. I would like to bring the board's attention to item 9.2.1 on our agenda. This is the Royal Oak Middle School and Royal Oak High School Staff Laptop Refresh. Just a little bit of background information on there, as discussed in our finance and facilities meeting, we talked a little bit about the need for the refresh cycle at both of these buildings. I believe at the high school, the teachers have had those laptops for five years, and at the middle school, they're on their fourth year. So being able to combine the refresh cycle for both schools will put us on a better trajectory and pattern moving forward to keep the cycles refreshed at an appropriate timeline, so I have that there for your consideration.
Okay, before we move on to 9.2.1, I'd like board comments about the launch to learning video with Mr. Francis down there.
I just wanted to say that I currently have an internship at the 44th District Court through Judge Meinike, and this all started all those years ago with the Justice 101 program in Ms. Mitchell's fifth grade class, so I can definitely vouch for it.
What school was that, Charlie?
Adams.
Thank you. Let's just not forget. Thank you. Appreciate it.
Who was your principal, Charlie?
I do know that former principal. We have a better one there now, but it's okay.
Do you have any other board comments about the presentation? No? See none? Item 9.2.1, can I have a motion? Trustee Wiki.
Resolved that the Royal Oak Schools Board of Education approves the purchase of new staff laptops for the Royal Oak Middle School and Royal Oak High School from People Driven Technology for $165,360. And be it further resolved that the superintendent or their designee is authorized to complete the necessary steps to finalize this purchase in line with district policies.
Do I have a second? Trustee Cook. Any discussion on the motion? See no call for a vote, all in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion is carried. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Chorhorsky. I would like to bring our attention to item 9.2.2. This would be the Royal Oak High School Course Proposals. We have a couple courses, again, as discussed during our finance and facilities meeting. We are proposing an advanced placement digital photography class and an advanced placement art and design class, and we feel confident that this will enhance our visual arts program and provide our students with some insight into getting that next step and some real-world opportunities.
We have a motion for 9.2.2. Trustee Cook.
Resolved that the Royal Oak Schools Board of Education approves adopting and implementing the proposed new high school courses beginning in the upcoming academic year as presented in the board packet.
Do you have a second? Trustee Alexander. Any discussion on the motion? See no call for a vote, all in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carried. Thank you. Bring us to 9.3, which is our finance, facilities, and bond update. Turn this over to Mrs. Isabella.
Good evening. I have the General Fund Amendment Number Two for your consideration this evening. Let me just get my documents prepared for you. So here you can see the audited numbers from the 23-24 school year. The original budget that was set in June of 2024 with a structural deficit of almost $3.8 million. The amendment number one from 24-25, the amendment number one that was passed in December of '24 with almost a $2.8 million structural deficit. And you'll remember that the big difference between the original and the first amendment was the use of our remaining 11 T and S or III funds. We used those for the first two teacher pays, so that was the big change in that first amendment. And then we have a little bit of a change here between December of '24 and now March of '25 with amendment number two. I just want to highlight some of those changes. Our operating deficiency has been reduced by $319,000. On the revenue side, we've increased by $1.2 million. And some of the most significant changes, we accepted another tuition student, so that was an additional $12,000. We have some increased interest income. We have money on a couple of different accounts, so we've been able to realize about $40,000 more in interest income. Our state aid is continuously reconciled. It does change throughout the year. And after the student count in October, that we weren't able to realize those pupil changes in the December amendment, it was too new, but they are now in our February count, or February, I should say, our February state aid payment. So we had a reduction of 21 FTE for our pupil count, which we lost about $214,000, but we did go up 46 FTE in our special education count, so that was an addition of about $469,000. We also had some additional state grants that were reconciled. When we submit for our special ed cost report, which is known as the 4096, we received an additional $486,000. And in addition, we received 29.7, which is an enrollment stabilization fund, and that was new on the state aid in February. We received about $50,000. In addition, when Dr. Yuanus and his team submitted our consolidated application, which includes Title I, II, III, and IV, we had some additional funding of $363,000 that we were able to realize in those amendments. In addition, our expenditures went up about $887,000. In most cases, that was some of those grants that I just reviewed, but for every income that comes in, we also have the expenditure that goes along with those grants that we realized. In addition, we are continuously updating our salaries and benefits. We encumber all our payroll and our benefits, so every time I do an amendment, I redo all of those encumbrances so that they reflect our actual staffing and the cost throughout the year. Contracted services were reconciled as well, and our outgoing transfers increased by $24,000, and that was the increase in the Community Service Fund transfer that was approved last month. So that's now been brought into the general fund budget amendment as well. Are there any questions? If not, 9.3.1 for your consideration.
We have a motion for 9.3.1. Trustee Alexander.
Be it resolved that the 2024-2025 General Fund Budget Amendment Number Two be amended as presented in the board packet.
Do we have a second? Trustee Van Heidsma. Any discussion on the motion? Let's have it now.
So, Mrs. Isabella, if you could speak to a couple of things, we talked a little bit about it at the Wellness Committee meeting, but one of the questions I asked about was like the food and service. You know, nobody has a crystal ball right now to know what's going on, but we talked a little bit about the food service, right, that we've continued to provide meals, and you had, I had asked you a question about that.
Right, so the free and reduced lunch program is a federal program, but in addition to that, so there's the free and reduced lunch, but we also have a state grant that provides the additional funding for that reduced lunch and then the students that would be full pay. So those costs are part of a state grant and not the federal grant. I know there's some concern about the loss of federal funding, and that's why that came up as part of the Wellness Committee yesterday. Our general fund includes, I believe, 3.8% of our funding is federal, and that's about $3.4 million. And then the big, another big component of federal funding that we receive is the free and reduced lunch program. It is not part of the general fund, it's part of the Food Service Fund, but also an important service for our students.
Trustee Anderson.
Are those funds from the, from which department?
That's also a good distinction, which we have talked about. Many of the federal grants, whether it be the consolidated application or our adult education funds, those come from the Department of Education. The free and reduced lunch program comes from the Department of Agriculture.
Any other discussion? Trustee Wiki.
Is there a breakout of how much, how much of that program, what percentage is covered by the federal money and what percentage is covered by the state grant?
I don't have that number off the top of my head, Fred, but I can get that.
Okay, thank you.
Any other discussion? See no call for a vote, all in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carried. Thank you.
I almost hate to ask this question, Mrs. Isabella, but where are we on the state budget? How's that process going?
Okay, so it's March, and usually we don't have the House and the Senate numbers until after spring break, so we're not quite there yet. We have seen the governor's budget proposal, and we have seen some numbers out of the House, but I don't think it's all of what we expect to see yet. So it's coming, it's coming slowly. It usually heats up around May is when you really start to see some motion on that, when we get past the May revenue consensus hearing, is when you really start to see that budget come together. So we're keeping a close eye, though.
Any other questions for Mrs. Isabella? Moving on to item 9.4, which is staff and student services. To Mr. Moweninski.
Okay, thank you, Mr. Chorhorsky. I have some personnel changes that I would like to talk about. Not listed on tonight's personnel report is the announcement of retirement from our superintendent, Ms. Fitzpatrick. And I just want to say a few things about that first. I've known about this, and it was hard keeping it secret, but, right, Ms. Fitzpatrick, Mary Beth, I've known for a long time, she was actually my kid's elementary school principal, and I loved you as an elementary school principal and even more as a colleague. It's really been great working with you for eight years. Thanks for putting up with me and always being accessible. I've interrupted you a thousand times, and you've always been so kind and gracious about it. I'm going to miss asking if I'm interrupting after I've interrupted you, if you have a minute. And little rituals, every night when I go home, she's still working, so I cut through her office to say goodnight and accuse her of flaunting her work ethic, which I find funny every time, and I think she finds annoying, but it's been a very good eight years. I do have a personnel report, as I always do. It's item 9.4.1 on tonight's agenda. It's not very long, it's 11 changes. Each month, I talk about those changes and go through them and summarize them for you. Because we are about to enter the spring and summer, when we really get busy with staffing, and we're meeting with our building principals right now to talk about staffing and changes, we should make additional staff, we might need positions we may not need to replace, I want to give some context to these changes before I start talking about what might seem like a long list in the months to come, but when you consider how big we are, how many people we employ, it's really relatively small, the number of changes I present to you every month. So I put a slide up that I want to share with you. This is a slide of the people we employ directly in Royal Oak Schools, and I'll go through them. Instructional staff, the Royal Oak Education Association, who's represented here tonight, always well-represented, 386 instructional staff, and I'll talk a little bit more about those members in a little bit. ROASA, the Royal Oak Education Support Association, which is a list of our group of our secretaries and paraprofessionals. ROASA, which is the Royal Oak Association of School Administrators. There are 24 school administrators employed by our district. The smallest bargaining unit is Raspa, the Royal Oak Psychologists, I think I have that back, School Psychologists Association, thank you, Mary Beth. There are nine members, and then we have 18 people who are unclassified, that is, the superintendent, Dr. Yuanus, Mrs. Isabella, myself fall into this category. We don't belong to one of those bargaining units, but in total, that is 597 people. Because we have three vacancies we need to fill right now, I'll just round it up to 600 employees of Royal Oak Schools, which is a lot of people, again, context for how many changes we have monthly. We do also contract many of our services. We'd have more employees if we didn't work with third-party contractors, but one of the largest being ABM, who provides our custodial and maintenance services. There are 64 members of ABM. Chartwells, you've heard Mike Jacobs and his team present before, provide our food service. There are 46 food service employees employed by Chartwells. Secure education consultants, also known as SHIELD, there are 11 of those individuals who are hall monitors at Royal Oak High School and Royal Oak Middle School. And edge of staff, so this is a little bit harder to define the exact number, but I'm going to say 150, because we do have quite a few that work daily in our Latch because we do have quite a few that work daily in our latchkey programs, some of our early childhood programs on a regular basis as building subs. If you add those two together, whoops. That's a total of 887 people who serve our kids on a daily basis. So teach, supervise, feed, transport, clean up after, care for, that's quite a few people. And the primary number driving the number of people we need for these positions is our total enrollment. Our total enrollment is, if you consider everyone, and I'm talking our early intervention programs, tuition preschool, Great Start Readiness preschool, DK through kindergarten, or through 12th grade, it's 5,137 students as of today. Obviously, that's the biggest factor determining how many staff we need. But we also, it gets a little more complicated than that. We also have to consider the individual needs of those over 5,000 students. Some of them need support from what I call ancillary staff, who don't provide classroom instruction, but support students individually as defined in their individualized educational plan. So we employ eight occupational therapists, eight physical therapists, 16 school social workers, 21 speech and language pathologists, which is quite often the first intervention that children identified with special needs need is help with speech and language. Three academic support teachers, five teacher consultants, and 118 paraprofessionals, which, as you know, has been challenging to staff completely. So that gives you a sense of who, who we employ, who works for our kids on a daily basis. And again, the list, we have 11 changes, and I'll go through them today. But that list is going to get considerably longer in the weeks and months to come. Ms. Cook, you had a question?
Yeah, would you say that a number of those ancillary staff are supported by federal funds?
I would say for sure, by special education funds, yes. So as I said, tonight's list is relatively small, though it'll be getting longer. We're working hard at determining our staffing needs for next year, all within this context. But item 9.4.1 on tonight's agenda is a list of the changes in the past month. And I'll just go that, through that for you very briefly. On that report, you will see four resignations, two retirement notifications, and five recommendations for hire. The two right, retirement notifications come from Alicia Brown, medical skills teacher for Royal Oak High School. Alicia's been with the district since 1993, so 32 years. And I believe she's a graduate of Kimball High School as well. And Jeff Cousins, a math teacher for Royal Oak Middle School. Jeff has been with the district since 2000, so 25 years. Jeff is also a graduate, I can't remember of which school, maybe Don Darrow. Kimball? The five recommendations for hire are for four paraprofessional positions, which I'm happy about. Those four individuals, one will be placed at Adams, one at Oak Ridge, one at Royal Oak Middle School, and one at Trails. We are still in need of two paraprofessionals for Royal Oak High School and one for Upton Elementary, which is why I rounded up our number of employees to 600. And that is item 9.4.1 on tonight's agenda for your approval.
With that, can we have a motion for 9.4.1? Trustee Van Heesma.
Be it resolved that the Royal Oak Schools Board of Education approves the regular personnel changes as presented in the board packet.
Do we have a second? Trustee Wiki, thank you. Any discussion on the motion? CNN will call for a vote. All in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carried. Thank you. Brings us to our new item, 10.1. Oh, sorry.
I didn't know if Mr. Wolinski had any updates with registrations and stuff like that.
Yes, I can. I can provide an update on enrollment. Enrollment began, as you know, February 3rd, and it's, it always starts out real busy. We've enrolled, I should not say we, Teresa Baumann has enrolled 219 children for kindergarten in the fall. 87 of those 219 are move-ups from developmental kindergarten and 63 for developmental kindergarten. And so we're at 219 for kindergarten. This past fall, we had 369 enrolled, so we're on good pace to be even with that number. And I think we had 80, I'm sorry, we had 87 enrolled for DK in the fall, and we are already at 63. So we're off to a very good start. The window for schools of choice opened March 10th, and it will remain open through April 8th. We have received 116 applications thus far. We approved 240 spaces. Typically, we, what we've approved, we don't enroll nearly that many. But my guess is we'll enroll somewhere around 70 to 80 students through schools of choice in grades DK through eighth grade.
Any other questions or comments for Mr. Wolinski? Excellent, thank you. To item 10.1. Yes. Which is the acceptance of Mrs. Fitzpatrick's letter. May have a motion. Trustee Van Heesma. It's all your fault now. You're making the motion.
I didn't write the letter. Be it resolved that the Royal Oak, be it resolved that the Board of Education accepts the resignation for retirement purposes of Superintendent of Schools Mary Beth Fitzpatrick effective July 31st, 2025.
Do we have a second? So many seconds. Trustee Anderson's hand first. Discussion on the motion? All right, I'll start us with discussion on the motion. So we have a very big job ahead of us. There are, in order to make this a very transparent process to the Board of Education, the community, the staff, students, everybody involved, this will be all conducted in open meetings. My suggestion is that we interview two firms that specialize in superintendent searches. Those firms are the Michigan Leadership Institution and the Michigan Association of School Boards. It's maybe a very aggressive request, but I'd like to see if we could get both those firms to come to Royal Oak next Tuesday, the 18th of March. Mrs. Sutterfield, do you think that is possible?
Yes.
Okay, perfect. And then, if my understanding is correct, that meeting does need to be posted 24 hours prior to 18 hours? Okay. So we've got all kinds of time to get them here. Trustee Cook.
Yeah, the 18th of March on my current calendar has about five different things. I don't, is that a date that we chose?
We did, it's just a date that I threw out.
Yeah, I, I have, I have the library board meeting that evening, as well as Arts and Preservation Committee meeting.
Yeah, there's an Arts and Preservation meeting.
Yeah, we could postpone that, okay.
Question, these would be short interviews? We're talking like 30 minutes.
Yeah, I would assume their presentation would probably be about 30 minutes.
I do want to add that we have a very short period of time, and that I think that haste is important.
Yeah, and I think we're probably going to find ourselves in a position where we may not be able to get all seven board members here for every meeting. And we'll do our best. But I think realistically, we have to move forward as quickly as possible.
If those dates don't work, can we propose the Monday and Tuesday of the following Which might be a little more realistic, I think. The 24th and the 25th of March. Yeah, no, I agree completely.
I'll add that the last time we did this, when we hired Mrs. Fitzpatrick, we started in January and hired somebody in March. So that was kind of our timeline then.
Which makes me feel better with that, that kind of timeframe. That would put us somewhere in mid-June. We've got time.
Okay, then if I could just request, if we did go with the 18th, would we reschedule our Arts and Preservation and perhaps have it at that 5:00 time period? Is that possible? Yeah.
Yeah, so our request will be March 18th at 5:00, and then the 24th or 25th at 5:00 as well? 5:30 maybe? Okay. Okay, so everybody up here knows I'll get with Mrs. Sutterfield, and we'll try to get this organized as quickly as possible. Is there any other discussion on the motion to accept Mrs. Fitzpatrick's resignation for retirement? That's a weird resignation.
Do we have to accept it? I'm just kidding.
You made the motion.
Yeah. I know.
All right, no further discussion on the motion. I'll call for a vote. All in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Any opposed?
Uh, aye, me. I oppose. Million percent. Had to do that. Someone, no, someone, no, no one's going to do it, okay? Had to take one from the team, no. Thanks, appreciate it, though.
Brings us to item 11, which is our second opportunity for public comments. Do you all have any cards? Is anybody who wishes to speak from the audience? Moving on to item 12, which is board comments and liaison reports. We have one scheduled report of the Health and Wellness Committee from Trustee Wiki.
Yes, so I attended my first Health and Wellness Committee meeting earlier this week. And I, one thing I'd like to do is, in the paperwork that we were given there, there was a good description about what the committee is, what the purpose of the committee is, and I think it's, it bears repeating. It was, I mean, I had a general idea, but it helped sort of solidify my, my ideas about what we were doing there. So this committee provides direction, oversight, and builds awareness to support healthy, or I'm sorry, health-promoting activities for our students and staff. These activities include nutrition, physical activity, substance use prevention and education, and mental health. We covered a bunch of different topics while we were there. We had a, what seemed to be a pretty good turnout, including three student representatives, which was really cool. And they were very, you know, their input was really valuable. We talked about the You Matter Week and how important that was. Some of the activities, I think we couldn't really cover all the activities that were included, but it was, it really sounded like a very valuable opportunity for the kids to participate in these things. Things like student-led, there was a student-led week of activities, there were TED Talks. Donations came in from outside organizations, the service panel discussions, a wide variety of activities. There was a discussion about Mike Jacobs at Food Service. I didn't, and by the way, I'm going to phone a friend sometimes because Mrs. Van Heesma was there with me. So if there's anything I miss, feel free to add color commentary. We're good with that. When it came to future initiatives, there was a program that we mentioned called Second Step SEL. I am not sure what that does, other than I know that it is, it is funded by the Royal Oak Houston Assistance. Is there any additional information about it? It's, it applies to K through 12.
It's actually in the elementaries, the Second Step.
Okay.
So, yeah, it's social-emotional learning, but it's a program we actually were able to expand, speaking, wearing my royal hat. So, and actually, it's run, the, the teachers that run the program are some of our retired teachers, which is actually really nice. So it's people that already have a connection to students in the schools. So, yeah.
Very good. Another upcoming engagement that we have is something called Character Strong, which was something, we're working with kids for the improvement of behavior or working to help them get over some sort of, any issues they have, like dealing with anxiety or the other things like that. There was a very robust discussion about the state of vaping in, like in the high school and what we're doing to try to combat that, how we're trying to provide the opportunity to, I guess, I'm at a loss for words, but educational assistance for people about some of the, some of the issues that go along with vaping or some of the risks that go along with it. And the students that were there gave a lot of real-world experiences about what's really happening and how prevalent this may be throughout the, at least in the high school, throughout the student body. There was a detailed discussion, and I, you'll have to pardon me, I don't know everybody's first and last name, but about a school psychologist named Dr. Tom at the high school. And these students just expressed their overwhelming love for the support and, and the help that he gives them. So I, I don't, I've never met him, but he seems like a wonderful guy. And it says a lot when you can get high school students to speak so, so, with such praise about someone like that. And we did talk a little bit about the recent death at the high school and what some of the support services were available for some of the students. At least one of the students that was with us was on the cross-country team with Ryan. And so, you know, they, they had had a lot of opportunity to sort of decompress from that. And the student, the school district provided that, and they appreciated it. And there was one other, one other thing about, they said that they were going to make QR codes available places throughout the high school for teens in crisis needing immediate, immediate support. Suicide crisis and prevention lines, there's, I think the QR code would give students immediate access to information and ways to access that kind of support system. I think the next meeting is in June? June 4th? And so that was my first one, and I was glad to be part of it.
Excellent report. Trustee Van Heesma.
And I think that it just amplifies the student engagement to having students here, speak to everybody, and having students on the committees. We had, we were very fortunate to have students that had a lot to say, which was really good. We had just such great dialogue. It was really important. And I think one of the things, just to kind of piggyback on the QR codes, was the students also recommended, just even Mr. Loomis and his weekly communication that goes out to students, just always having like some, some way for students to contact somebody immediately. Like, you know, if they're not comfortable, if they, they're not comfortable having a conversation, but just always having some sort of immediate way to, to connect with somebody was something that was raised as well. So, thank you.
Any other board comments? Trustee Van Heesma.
I always have board comments. So I just wanted to do a couple of thank yous to Adams Elementary teachers, Mr. Dion and Mrs. Berger. I was able to read to their students. And it was both the 4th grade and then their reading buddies with the 2nd grade class. So both of those teachers are teachers that my students had, my girls had, when they went to elementary school. But just a shout out for that opportunity again, Mrs. Phillips. It is just delightful, and the kids were so interactive. It was just a blast. Also, a shout out to Oak Ridge, Mrs. Gembas, for letting me participate in her student, with her students to, and her staff to do a read there. I'm visiting Upton tomorrow, so I'm very excited about that. And just again, a shout out to students, to other student, other ways that we hear student voices. We have another student lunch tomorrow. So we do have students signed up for that. So it's an opportunity for board members and the superintendent to just sit and have lunch with our students. And they're, you guys are so honest, I love it. So whatever's, you know, on your mind, good, bad, otherwise, it's really important to hear because you're the ones in the schools, right? So I think I'm really grateful for that. A shout out to the Royal Oak High School Robotics Team, was able to go to their competition a week ago, Saturday now, at Ferndale High School. If you've never been, it's pretty crazy. So just a shout out to them. And just to kind of piggyback, I talked with students and also some parents for a bit. And apparently, our elementary robotics program is like the biggest in the state of Michigan. We have the greatest number of students in robotics at the elementary level, which is pretty cool. And I think we have five teams at the middle school, too, which is pretty impressive. So just a couple more things, a little plug for the middle school, the Wizard of Oz is coming up, March 21st to 23rd. And then the high school is doing our town, April 25th to 27th. Thank you.
Any other board comments? Now, actually, an opportunity to thank everybody who came out and supported the Skates family. Two weeks ago on Saturday, the memorial service had, I would say, probably 400 people in that building. I mean, I think it speaks to our community that we all come together. I mean, I think it speaks to our community that we all come together, as Ms. Boyer said earlier. It's a great place to live, it's a great place to raise your family, and I think we're all very lucky to live in such a great town. With no further business to come before, so we are adjourned.
Okay, so I exist.